I have an invocation offered by Commissioner Pajali, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Praise God. Lord, thank you for another day of life and for watching over us during the inclement weather last week. Please allow all of us around this table to have the courage and insight to make sound decisions as we do the people's work this evening. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Meyers, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meiner?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of August the 14th, 2023. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wadding.
I move that we accept the minutes of the August 14th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, share with us your name and address and your agenda item comments.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, San Antonio, Ohio, born and raised. Congratulations to Mr. Orzak. The community is confident that he will take into consideration the entire community. I have a couple of items here on the agenda. The first one is Item A and B on the consent agenda, which is the purchase of wetland mitigation credits from Lorain County at the cost of $170,000 for the construction of the Sandusky Bay pathway through viable Sandusky wetlands. It's been quite some time since this body has discussed the landing project, and maybe during the discussion on Items A and B, we can reiterate how it came to be that we became owners of the wetlands that we're talking about. Item D, which is a $42,000 increase over the original agreement for the Meg Street project, I'm sure that the engineer will explain that increase. Item F, which is the Sandusky Sailing Club lease agreement, on the agenda, there's no mention of what that dollar amount is and whether or not any of the dollars generated from that lease will be reimbursed back at the sailing club. Item K, which is the transit grant application, again, there's no mention in the agenda or on the agenda of the dollar amount that we're seeking for the Sandusky Transit. On a regular agenda, item number two, which is the application for downtown street paving project, which is Market Street, I believe, from Jackson to Wayne, my comment on that is every time we use capital improvement funds or street funds rather than TIF dollars that are being generated downtown, somebody else's street doesn't get paid. So I don't know if this body, or maybe we can wait until the next city commission comes onboard, that we can get back to using TIF dollars properly in the downtown area so that we're not taking money away from other areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Any comments to the public regarding agenda items? If not, we have the distinct pleasure of swearing in our new city manager this evening, and we've asked Mr. Harris, our interim law director, to provide that service for us.
Do you, Commissioner President, dismiss Mr. Orzak's question?
You're only in charge here, buddy.
No penning included.
Mr. Orzak, can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I am John T. Orzak, Jr.
I am John T. Orzak, Jr.
Do solemnly swear that I will support?
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Protect and defend the Constitution?
Protect and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Ohio?
The United States and the state of Ohio.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
Ordinances?
Ordinances.
And resolutions of the City of Sandusky?
And resolutions of the City of Sandusky.
That I will honestly?
That I will honestly?
faithfully?
Faithfully.
And impartially discharge?
And impartially discharge.
The duties of the city manager?
Duties of the city manager.
For the City of Sandusky?
For the City of Sandusky.
To which I have been appointed to?
To which I have been appointed to?
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
That will probably be the last time you get a standing ovation. Next on our agenda is the swearing in of a firefighter. Mr. Orzak, I'll ask you to swear in our new firefighter, Andrew Johnson.
This family wants to get up and get pictures, feel free. I, Andrew Johnson.
I, Andrew Johnson.
Recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, we solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
Recognizing the fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, we solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the state of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter in the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey duly constructed laws of the United States of America, the state of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
I apologize. I will continue to strive to serve our community and to be an influence of good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
This is the tough part.
Through you, President Brady, to the commission, I just have a few things to say about Andrew. Andrew's a hereon resident, he's been married to his wife Megan for nine years, and as you can see, they have three young daughters. Prior to being hired by Sandusky Fire Department, Andrew worked for the Faustoria Fire Department and Sandusky County EMS for a total of about six and a half years. He's a 240-hour fire certification, he's a certified paramedic, and he's also ACLS, PALS, and CPR instructor. Andrew is assigned to Number One Shift under the direction of Captain Jason Resch. Welcome to Sandusky, Andrew.
Next order of business is we have a proclamation regarding Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month that will be delivered by Commissioner Meiner.
Thank you.
And do we have a representative here from that group?
Yep. I see Donna Bretts and some other purple shirts out there, so.
Donna, please step up to the microphone.
You might want to stand or be at the podium, yeah.
They're going to want to get pictures.
Okay. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is progressive, degenerative disease of the brain, and most common form of dementia that affects only a person's memory, but also their judgment and reasoning abilities. And close to 30,000 Ohio citizens are currently living with Alzheimer's, or another dementia, and it affects more than 6 million Americans. And whereas Ohio is projected to see a 13.6% increase in cases by 2025, Medicaid costs of sharing for individuals living with Alzheimer's is more than $2.5 billion, and anticipated 16% interest increase in Medicaid expenditures by 2025, must be a fireman thing. Another 600,000 Ohioans are unpaid caregivers, and half of those living with the disease have yet to be diagnosed. And caregiving for individuals with Alzheimer's disease often takes on enormous toll on family members. Caregivers themselves only suffer more stress, depression, and health problems than caregivers of people with other illnesses. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is not a normal part of aging, it is progressive brain disease without any way to prevent or slow its progression, and is fatal. And whereas we recognize a significant role to Alzheimer's Association, Northwest Ohio Chapter plays in offering diverse educational and supportive programming and services, caregiver support groups, while educating the community and increasing awareness of Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia by early detection and diagnosis, advocacy, and research. Now therefore, I, Mike Meiner of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim recognition of September 2023 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in Sandusky, and I urge all residents merchants to paint the town purple during the first two weeks of September, and all are invited to walk to end Alzheimer's on September 9th to raise awareness of Alzheimer's disease that affects more than 6 million Americans, dated the 28th day of August 2023.
I want to give a shout out to Page and the City of Sandusky for the wonderful team that you all have formed. You guys do an amazing job helping us to raise awareness and funds for Alzheimer's disease, and we just really appreciate the support. We look forward to everybody painting the town purple, September 1st through the 9th, to raise awareness, and then please come join us at Shoreline Park on September 9th at 9 o'clock as we walk to end Alzheimer's. Donna, do you want to say something?
Jason, Jason, I promise.
Oh, hi, Jason.
I promise you, there will be no purple paint on the sidewalks of this city. All I wanted to say. So thanks, so I look forward to painting the town purple.
Yep, we'll see you on the night. Thank you.
Thanks, and thanks for what your organization does for this terrible disease. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on our proposed recreation center, provided by Nancy Nozak of Branstad, Carroll.
Let me set my timer, so I don't go over my 15 minutes of fame here. All right, so we have the presentation up there on the screen. I just want to briefly go through where we are in the planning for a potential recreation center for the City of Sandusky. We have, we're in the end stages of our site selection and conceptual design process. So what we have been doing so far is really identifying what does the City of Sandusky want, what do they need for the residents in terms of recreation and a recreation center? What kind of programs would there be, therefore, how big of a facility would we need, what is it going to cost to build it, what's it going to cost to operate it, where's it going to go? So that's what we're looking at. This is not a designed facility, this is enough information to answer those questions, and then again, to go on the ballot to get some funding for the operating of this facility. So to quickly go through, let's see, one of these buttons will work, oop, did I go too far? So with the conceptual design, I went backwards, up. We've started with a layout of a facility that is about 36,000 square feet. It includes two gymnasiums with an indoor walking and running track elevated above that. There are also exercise classrooms in this zone of the building with, on the upper level where the track is, we have fitness equipment and weight equipment and things like that. So that's kind of the main bulk of the facility. Also, in the front of the facility, we have some offices for staff and for operations of this facility. We have a large gathering room, activity room, that can be divided into two for a variety of activities, and then one more smaller activity room that'll probably have a sink for some messier things to happen. Just in trying to figure out how much space is this going to take on a site, we also have planned for like a garden or plaza area outside of those activity rooms, so there is some additional outdoor space with the facility. The commission determined that their preferred site is the old American Crayon factory site. So this is an initial layout to say, all right, how big is this building, how would it fit on this site, do we have room for future expansion, which is one of the goals, which we do, and room for other amenities that can fit on the site if the city desires to do that. So construction cost, there is some site preparation that needs to happen because of the former use of this property. Then there's the actual construction cost of the building and the parking and the grounds included in that. Because of previous discussions with you, we have added some allowance for some kind of a fence or a barrier along the railroad track side, both for safety and security, as well as potentially blocking some of the sound from the trains that go by. So that has been added to this cost from the last time you saw it. So we're currently, this 36,000 square foot building, in addition to the required site work associated with it, is at about $15.8 million construction cost right now. We don't want to underestimate this at this point in time. Again, we haven't designed this building, it's all based on size and square footage and some assumptions for the type of construction and what it might be. The worst thing we want to do is come in here and give you a number and then have it go way up as we go through design. So we're trying to be very conservative with all of our numbers, both from operating costs and programs and construction costs, at this point in time. So we're at about $15.8 right now in our assumptions. There is some further evaluation that is going to occur. We have proposals to do some additional geotechnical boring. Some were done on the western part of the site, we want to get a couple more on the eastern part of the site. We could flip this whole plan and put the building on the other corner, depending on how that information, if that information says that that would be better for constructing a building. The geotechnical company can also do a vibration analysis on this site, as well as a sound analysis on the site at the same time. So they have given us a proposal to do that, so that we can hopefully identify and, excuse me, respond to the concerns that were voiced about both the sound and the vibration and the activity of that railroad track, and how it might impact and influence how any development is designed on this site. Then we have, just shown on here graphically, some additional amenities that may be considered on this site, including some tennis courts and possibly a splash pad, just to show that there's enough space on this property for all of those things to occur in the future. When we get to what's it going to cost to operate and what kind of revenues do we think we're going to get? So we've run several scenarios with this size facility in terms of what's it going to take to operate it. And that includes, the biggest cost there is personnel and staffing, there are also supplies, there's maintenance, there's utilities. So we factor in, we make some assumptions on that. We've looked at different facilities in the area, we've done some case studies, so we have some actual figures from them. So right now, we're looking at a potential of $700,000 a year in those costs for annual expenses. From a revenue side, we have looked at memberships and also program revenue. So those are the two main ways that you're going to get revenue. Both of those things are, again, we're making assumptions at this point, especially the program revenue. Right now, a lot of the programs are free of charge or very low charge, so we want to start there. As you develop the plans for the facility, you'll also be developing kind of the operating pro forma to understand what kinds of membership rates are you going to charge, and what kind of programs might you charge for. Again, adding programs, you add staff, or you add instructors you may hire, so they kind of balance each other out. Again, trying to look at conservative estimates. Then we have kind of what we call the gap, and that's what the operating levy is for. We know that this is not going to, this is not a break even facility. So the operating levy is to be able to keep those membership rates down and those program costs down while still having a sustainable facility to move forward. So right now, with the numbers we're currently looking at, we have a gap between $350,000 and $400,000 a year that that levy, the levy funds will cover, as well as long-term maintenance. We want to establish a long-term maintenance reserve, because when you move in, there's not a lot of problems, but years down the road, you get more and more problems, and that just increases. So we want to make sure we are planning for that appropriately. Then finally, looking at some of these potential programs, we have, these relate somewhat to the spaces that are being designed. Again, you find out how you want to use a facility, then you determine how you build it. So we have a lot of activities that are planned for the gymnasium, of course, there's two courts being planned in there, so all kinds of activities, not just sports, but also camps and tournaments and special events, you know, it's a big space, so we want to make sure we utilize it. The group exercise rooms, there are two good-sized group exercise rooms for a wide variety of exercise classes. The large group activity room, again, that can be divided into two smaller rooms, these are, you know, these again can be activity spaces for things like martial arts, that can be in a fairly nicer space, you know, not where the other activity, exercise classes want to have mats available and things like that. So just a different kind of space, different kinds of health and wellness programs, youth programs, senior programming, real flexible space. Then a small group activity room, as I said, can be kind of a wet zone, so it's a little messier, you know, we can have sinks, we can do painting and arts and crafts and things like that, as well as a variety of other programs. Again, the key is to be flexible in terms of the spaces you design, so that they can provide space for a variety of activities. Then in addition to that, we talked about room, a space for fitness equipment, the walking and running track, and then some outdoor facilities that want to be developed at the same time. So those are the current recommendations at this point in time before we move into, we're not going to move into a design phase until after the election and we determine how the citizens respond to that levy. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments, Commissioners? Mr. Pajali?
Mr. Chairman, on that slide that shows the expenses and the gap, just, could you bring that up for a minute?
Oh, I thought I did, what happened there? Oh, there we go.
Okay.
There it is.
All right, good. So the annual expenses, just for my clarification, are $700,000 estimated, and the levy would generate about $672,000. So if you applied that to the annual expenses, you'd be about $28,000 short there, right, on that expense?
Yeah, the first year, right.
Okay. So, and then the annual revenue, the 3 to 350, is that just on what memberships would generate?
Memberships and programs. We've made some assumptions on, again, what kind of programs might generate revenue or not. So depending on what kind of programs you offer, and depending on what kind of memberships you offer, and.
All right. Do you know how many memberships you'd have to sell to generate the 3 to 350, just ballpark?
Ballpark, well, I have a chart here, if I could find it quickly. That number comes from an assumption of just under 100, let me see, where are my memberships? Number of households, total percent of, total number of population that would join as members is just under 500, or 500, so that's about 100 youth memberships, about 100 senior memberships, just under 300 adult memberships. And then there's, that would be residents, and then we also looked at some non-residents memberships as well.
Okay.
That might have a little higher rate to them.
All right.
So we factored some of that in. So again, we're at about, if you add all that up, we're just over 500 residents annually.
Okay.
That would get memberships.
All right. And then on the operating gap, that would be the reserve that you're talking about, that reserve for improvements to the building and whatnot, that's what that would be, and that's what that would entail, the 350 to 400?
Well, the 300 to 400 is the difference between what we're anticipating for the annual expenses and what we're anticipating for the annual revenue from the memberships. So there's a gap there between 350 and 400,000. And then there's also going to be a desire to have a long-term maintenance reserve, so when you need those maintenance expenses, you have some money set aside for that. So both of those combined is what is the current plan for the levy funds.
Okay.
Did that help? I don't know if I answered it directly, but I tried.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Nozak, to be clear, what you're portraying here, though, is the levy is designed to cover the operating costs that are not covered by the revenue. So you've got your 700,000 in annual expenses, you've got 300,000 that you're anticipating in revenue, and the delta, the difference between that, is between 350 and 400, and our levy, if it is successful, is meant to generate about $650,000. So there's a.
Yeah, there's some wiggle room there, yeah.
If this all came true, and these numbers held true, you would have a reserve, you know, each year, based on that, to apply to maintenance or future maintenance.
Yes, correct. And then, and then the other, you know, we also want to plan for fluctuation. We wouldn't want to get an operating plan that cuts you right at the line.
Sure.
You know, we're going to bring in exactly the amount of money we need from this levy, because then, is that sustainable moving forward?
Yes.
So the plan is to be under it now, so that we are sustainable for the next 30 to 50.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Chairman, so between the seniors and the children in regards to the membership, what is the roundabout number for each of those, I guess, classes, if you would, for lack of a better term? It doesn't have to be exact.
From a membership, the rates that we're assuming right now?
Yeah.
Youth memberships, we have $150 a year, senior memberships is 120, adult memberships is 210. And that really comes from looking at facilities nearby that are going to have comparable, that offer comparable programs and comparable spaces. So we kind, but we also took it on the lower side, because the whole point of the levy is so that those numbers come down a little bit. I didn't say, we also have family memberships at $350 a year for residents and $500 a year for non-residents. I didn't add those up in there. So there's another 600 memberships through families, as opposed to the individuals. But again, we're trying to, you know, you got to start somewhere, and make some assumptions to see where we are with these numbers, and that's where we've started. So in our experience, it's City Commission that has to approve what those rates are. So when you actually get to the point of completing a facility and you look at what those rates are, then you have to continually kind of run those numbers again to see where you are. That's the other reason we want to make sure that there's a cushion in those levy funds for, again, to be sustainable in the future.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Paul?
With regard to vibration and sound, I was the one that brought that up. Don't spend a bunch of money on vendors on my account. The 110 decibels is what the train horn sounds like, and that's as loud as it gets after the horn goes off, and it's done, it drops down to about 80, 75 inside the building, so don't spend a whole bunch of money on vendor buddies to make more money. Likewise, vibration, it's not vibrating enough to knock the building down. It vibrates enough to make it, if you have something stored nearby, that it'll vibrate somewhat, depending on if you have a, it looks like we're going to build something much more than a house. something much more than a house, it, it probably won't shake or break building, so you can save, don't, don't spend that money on my...
Okay. We will evaluate that. We did, uh, get proposals from four different geotechnical engineers, and, and two of them gave us options for doing that, and the other two said we really don't think it's necessary.
Yeah.
But we wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence and, and determining what that would be. So we'll take a close look at that.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
I think it's, uh, I think it's appropriate to point out that, and I think you have pointed out, that the numbers that we're looking at here in fifteen million dollars, and you had a splash pad, you're about sixteen-three, uh, those are, those are really just budget numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I, I would caution, uh, our commission, as, as I did when we worked our way through the Justice Center, that you can't have sticker shock until you see the sticker. And, and we haven't seen the sticker. This is not meant to be a sticker. Uh, and we are hopeful, I think all of us are hopeful, that that number doesn't hold up. Um, and I, I'm confident that, uh, that, uh, you are erring on a very conservative side. Uh, I, I hope that's true with, uh, with all of your figures, and I hope that we're pleasantly surprised if and when we get to the, uh, the construction cost.
Mm-hmm. And there, and there are things we can do in design in terms of the type of construction and the, and the materials on the facade and things like that, and where you spend your money and where you don't, and a lot of those kind of decisions that will happen down the road. But at this point in time, we want to make sure that there's enough, we, we don't want to go way overboard and blow this out of the water, so we feel that this is a, a good estimate at this point in time for a budget number to be able to move forward.
Understood. Thank you. Is there additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Just one, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
Um, these membership costs are, are pretty much, seem to be in the same line that they were with the YMCA before, and essentially pretty close to what it is if we just wanted to join Tim Dorsey's gym or something around town. So I'm questioning, this is a commission issue, that we spent fifteen million dollars to start with, and, uh, then tax the taxpayers and other six hundred thousand dollars for a minimal number of people that can probably do jazzercise in any number of, uh, gyms around the city of Sandusky. It's just something we have to think about. It's not pleasant, but that's really what we're talking about. Has little to do with you, 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 you made the drawing, and we're making the decision, and the public ultimately gets the final word on that, but that's my two cents about spending money while we're planning on closing the, uh, never mind, never, I'm closing down the buses for over four hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure that this fifteen million makes sense to me.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioner? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Have a motion to accept those communications.
So moved.
A second? And a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Tonight, we have eleven items on the consent agenda. Any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
Is it possible to answer any of those questions without moving those?
There is, we can have discussion.
Perfect.
On, on items A, B, and K, I think, were the questions on the consent agenda. Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, approval of wetlands mitigation purchase agreement with Pearson. Item B, approval of wetlands mitigation purchase agreement with Black Rocky. Item C, approval of emergency purchase and install of traffic lights. Item D, amendment to funding splits on change order one and final for Meg Street project. Item E, approval of asphalt purchase from Erie Materials. Item F, approval of submerged land lease payment for Sandusky Sailing Club. Item G, approval of print services agreement and lease with ComDoc and Xerox. Item H, accepting gift of deed of eight oh five North Depot Street into land reutilization program. Item I, approval of agreement for lead paint removal program with Health Department. Item J, approval and ratification of community foundation grant application for lock boxes. Item K, approval of federal transit grant application.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
I move to accept the consent agenda and declare that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section thirteen or Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second. And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, I wonder if you would, uh, share with us, uh, the specifics on perhaps Items A and Items B, they're, they're very similar mitigation purchases, and tell us how that, how that works and why we're doing that.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I believe the question was exactly how we got to own these properties, um, or the facilities in which the, the landing is intended to go on, um, the north-south runway, the remaining property that Cedar Fair no longer is intending to use for the Sports Center facility, they donated the large majority of that to the city for the sole intent of this project, for the pathway, for the landing, and for that park. Uh, on the western end of that property, along the eastern side of the Heminger Ditch, there are easements, two different easements that are donated from the metro parks, one for utilities and roadway, and the other one for the park and the pathway itself that would cross Heminger Ditch. So that's how we own it. We're still, uh, moving forward with acquiring, this is a huge step for us, and acquiring these, uh, opportunities for wetlands, and hopefully we can resolve the last final, uh, environmental issues that we're, we're trying to work through and get all the permits, and then still move forward next year with, with bidding.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. If, uh, I believe the next item that we had a question about was Item F, and that would be, uh, if our finance director can speak to the value of that, I think, I think I read what it was, but if you speak to the value of that, and I believe the question was, are we giving any of that money back to the Sailing Club?
So through the commission president, to Mr. Schwanger's question, the invoice amount is eighteen thousand, one hundred and four dollars and thirty-six cents, and we do invoice that entire amount to the Sailing Club. So they will reimburse us that entire amount.
And the reason that we're in the middle of that is because the state will, will not allow a sub-recipient to, to pay that, we, we have to pay it for him.
Correct.
I think the last question dealt with Item K. Item K would be? Mr. Stacy? And the question was, what was the question?
Um, what? They, uh, just, through your commission president, I think the question by Mr. Schwanger was, why wasn't there a, a dollar figure on there? I believe, uh, Mr. Stacy can answer that, but, um, we have to apply, we're changing from rural, uh, to urban, and all of those numbers won't come until we do the application and we get our funding, um, next year, but if you have anything to add, go ahead.
Through Commissioner President, um, to answer the question, the total has not been calculated yet. Uh, tonight is merely a formality for permission to apply. Due to the census results, we, uh, reclassified from a urban transit system to a small, I'm sorry, from a rural transit system to a small urban transit system that will be directly funded through the FTA. This is one of the requirements, uh, to apply for FTA funds.
We don't know the numbers now, but we'll...
Not until next year, we'll be applying and receiving, uh, FTA direct funds.
Okay.
We still are currently with the fifty-three-eleven ODOT funds.
Thank you, Mr. Stacy.
Mr. Chairman, before he leaves?
Commissioner Poole?
That change in designation, is that good, bad, and different? What's...
I'm sorry?
Is that good, bad, and different, that change from...
It was unsolicited by the city. It puts us in the FTA, uh, direct funds that does come from a larger pool of money, uh, which I would agree would help our system.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pajali?
Got a question from Mr. Stacy. I think we, we were a small urban, and then the census before, we lost that population, so we went to rural. But I, I think I, did I see where they, they, uh, that grant will provide fifty percent of the funding?
Correct, operating.
Operating.
And eighty percent of our maintenance costs.
Has that been kind of the standard percentage, or is it going up, or is it going down, or is it just kind of staying where it is?
Uh, to answer that question, it is what the current allocation is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stacy. As far as you call the role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, you present item number one, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed authorizing the submission of an application by the city manager for financial assistance and to enter into a project agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission in order to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs authorized by Chapter one sixty-four of the Ohio Revised Code for the Camp Street Resurfacing and Reconstruction Project through Monroe Street to Perkins Ave, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the role on the motion, please.
I would like to make one request in a possible amendment through you guys, is that the actual project is from France to Perkins Avenue, not from Monroe. We had an error in our communication, and for the submission to OPWC, we want to make sure that we have everything exactly right, so that should say France to Perkins Avenue.
Can we amend that at the table, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Move to amend.
Second. And a motion to a move and amend, uh, and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Pajali?
Mr. Klein, I saw that you had, you had applied for this last year maybe, and, and you were turned down. Do you think you'll have a better shot this year?
Through the commission president, last year, we did the entire section from Monroe to Perkins, hence the, uh, error on the document. That number was extremely high, and it really lowered our percentage on the project, and we should get more points doing it this way, and we're hopeful that this does get us across the finish line.
I've, I've been in those, uh, rooms where they score these out, and you get a bunch of engineers in there, and those guys will cut your throat over a nickel. So, so, yeah, it's, it's a good thing you're, you're dotting your i's and crossing your t's. Good luck.
Thanks for, thanks for applying for it twice. Don't get discouraged. Ms. Myers, would you, uh, pull the commission on, on the amended, on the, on the, on the motion to amend?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That legislation is amended, returned to discussion. Any further discussion on that legislation, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That resolution has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
Item number two?
Excuse me, number two?
It is requested a resolution be passed authorizing the submission of an application by the city manager for financial assistance and to enter into a project agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission in order to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs authorized by Chapter one sixty-four of the Ohio Revised Code for the Downtown Street Repaving Project, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Pajali?
Would this, uh, would this entail all those streets in the downtown area?
No, through the commission president, I did get a, uh, image this morning that I should have passed on to commission, but this project would entail Wayne Street from East Water to East Washington, as well as Jackson for that same limit, and then all of Market from Decatur to Franklin, as well as Washington Row.
And, and if I recall correctly, Mr. Klein, it's been decades since we've done those projects, or those streets.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, um, some of them are over forty years, nearing fifty years, that we haven't resurfaced some of those. Um, the intent with this, the, the hope behind this is that we can certainly do, as Mr. Schwanger alluded to, and, and we always like to apply for funds to free up funds for other areas, and being that these OPWC funds, and a lot of times the MPO funds and different funding sources, like those streets that have higher traffic counts because they feel that it serves more, more users. So if this area is more appealing to that OPWC commission than, uh, smaller local roads, so we apply for these, so then we can use some of those, uh, you know, the hundred and seventy-five or however many dollars that we are, uh, supplementing with this project to use towards those local streets.
Sure. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That resolution has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed twenty-twenty-three JC and Washington Park Concrete Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Meinter?
Is it an ordinance or a resolution?
Resolution.
Okay. I move for the adoption of this resolution in full accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. We owe a debt of gratitude, uh, particular piece of legislation, and these projects are being funded, I believe, a one-hundred percent by, uh, the Randolph J. and Estelle M. Dorn Foundation, uh, the Mylander Foundation, and the Whitman Weaver Charitable Foundation. Uh, I think most of us realize, uh, how fortunate we are to have these kind of foundations in our city. Uh, they, they are providing, uh, they have continued for decades, all of them have to provide, uh, services to the city that otherwise would, uh, be borne by the taxpayers, so our thanks certainly goes out to all three of those foundations. Ms. Myers, you call the role in that, uh, motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with South Shore Electric Incorporated of Illyrio, Ohio, for the Sandusky Transit Maintenance Complex Lighting Upgrade Project for the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call and roll in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed asbestos abatement and demolition of 917 Jackson Street Extension Project, declaring, directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meinter.
I move for the adoption of this resolution in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call and roll in that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the Auditor of State, City of Sandusky, and Re &amp; Associates Incorporated of New Fidelia, Ohio, for auditing services for the fiscal years 2023 through 2027, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City's Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call and roll in that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance has passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number seven?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and approving the execution of an employment agreement between the City of Sandusky and John T. Orzak Jr., and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meinter.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Orzak, this is your last chance to get out of this. Ms. Myers, will you call and roll in the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance has passed, and we have a new city manager. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our new city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. I showed the commissioners this packet. It's a bleeding control thing. The City Safety Committee received a donation of 12 Stop the Bleed kits from ProMedica Fremont Memorial Hospital, President Jody Rucker. These kits will be kept at the various city facilities in case of an emergency, if I can get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection. The motion should be approved. Hearing no objection. That motion is approved. There, thanks.
The Police and Fire Flag Football League, in conjunction with the Sandusky City Schools, will be starting in September. All students entering first grade through sixth grade, regardless of their home school district, are eligible to participate. The registration is now open. And area schools are back in session. We ask motorists to please drive with caution in the areas around our schools. Our officers will have an increased presence in and around the school zones to promote safety or safe driving habits. And I guess just to piggyback off that, we did have a meeting with the school transportation, the superintendent and folks, along with Mr. Klein, the police chief, and staff. And the Hays Ave. to Campbell Street stretch is going to be impacted for about the first month of school. So we had a good conversation with them, make sure that the students and parents that are picking up their kids will get in and out of there as safely as possible. So we appreciate the cooperation of the school district during this time. And then for finance, the city's $12,270,000 various purpose note issuance sold to KeyBank Capital Markets on August 24, 2023, with a net interest rate of 4.135%. Community development, the consolidated annual performance and evaluation, the CAPR draft will be open to public review starting August 23 through September 8, 2023. The CAPR covers the accomplishments of the Community Development Block Grant Programs 2022 program year. A copy of the CAPR draft will be accessed, or can be accessed, through the city's website at www.cidiosandusky.com/cdbg. Hard copies may also be requested. Please call 419-627-5730 for more information. There is a copy at the Sandusky Library. A public hearing will be held Monday, September 11 at the City Commission Meeting. Written comments must be received by September 8, 2023. Planning Department, the public is invited to a meeting on Wednesday, September 20, to hear a presentation and participate in a series of activities to provide feedback on the draft historic preservation design guidelines. The presentation will be part of the regularly scheduled Landmarks Commission Meeting here in Commission Chambers at City Hall. The activities and discussion will be held after the Landmarks Meeting is adjourned. And from the Recreation Department, Sandusky Rec completed another successful Whitman Weber Safety Town Week with 60 participants registered and 50 successfully completed the program. Thanks again to the Whitman Weber Charitable Foundation for their financial support of the program. And that concludes my first report.
Comments or questions first, any minute.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington?
Saturday during our coffee with the commission, we had a couple residents show up, and they were asking about the manager's report. They said they can't get enough. And that's available, if they call your secretary, correct? They could get that emailed to them
Absolutely.
for each meeting.
Yes, sir.
So I just want to make that available, you know, so residents do know about that.
Is that report on the website?
I don't know if it is. I'll check. But it is available on request, for sure.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions for the city manager? Items of old business. Any items of old business, commissioners? Items of new business? I have three items of new business. I will need a motion to set a public hearing for the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for CDBG for September 11, 2023.
So moved. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. The public hearing is set. I will need another motion to set a public hearing for the rezoning of 123 Division Street on October 9 of 2023.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That public hearing is set, and I will require a motion to set a public hearing for an amendment to the General Business District on October 9, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Whatever that is in the one for Division Street, the public hearing, would whoever is responsible of that send a copy of that out so I can see it early?
The rezoning of 123 Division?
Yeah, just so we know what it is, and likewise, this one.
And the same for the item we're just talking about now?
Yes, appreciate it. Just read it.
A motion and a second, additional discussion. Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That public hearing is set. Any additional items of new business, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I'm not sure where to bring this up, whether it was under the manager's report or older new business. But a lot of residents experienced flooding over this last week, given the historic rains that we had. And Mr. Klein put together a great explanation for the commission, or put it together for the Register, which was then published, and it was an excellent explanation. He also shared that with us. But there are a lot of folks who would not have seen the Register article, and I thought it might be good to take a minute to, you know, talk about what's been done and how much worse it might have been had we not made those investments over the course of the last, Mr. Klein, dozen years, something like that.
Mr. Klein? Mr. Klein, you may speak.
Yeah, so that rain event that we had, it dropped about six inches. It registered as about a 10-hour span, but there was a break in there of about three or four hours right in the middle of it. In the first hour and a half to two hours, we got almost three inches of rain, and that really backed up some of the sewer systems in the city, meaning that all the future rain that was coming didn't have anywhere else to go. There are areas that we have put quite a bit of investment in. We put some time in that would have really reacted very poorly. One of the examples, I would say, is Venice Road Lift Station. We did have a couple calls from out on the West End that were a result of the power outages. Those were the two calls that we got that were impacted, that would have been impacted by the Venice Lift Station. In the past, we probably would have gotten 30, 40 calls in that area. So we are doing our best. Over the last 10 years, we've probably done somewhere in the neighborhood of over 50 projects, in the range of obviously $30 million at the high-rate treatment to $50,000, $60,000 projects, like the work that was done recently in Central Park to connect some of those catch basins. We are not aware, I know when I first got here, we were getting a lot of phone calls from the Foxborough neighborhood and places like that. We got very few calls, if any, and most of those were just standing water issues. So we are working through the issues we have encountered. We're still working through. We know that we have more to do. It takes time. We're working our hardest to get there. Our crews work night and day, making sure they're planning. They were telling me this afternoon that even with the recent rain event, they learned some new things. They learned some new, saw some new things that they had never seen before, actually quite a few new things that they had never seen before, and that will impact their decisions and their recommendations to me as we move forward in the future on projects elsewhere. I can say that we still have projects in our capital plan on an annual basis. Right now, we're showing projects all the way through the year 2030. And I know this recent storm event is going to show additional projects. So as money is available, we're trying not to impact rates. We're trying not to deal with that as best we can, knowing that we do have these flooding issues. We do have areas where there are combined sewers. I would say the majority of the issues that we had are where there are combined sewers. Those sewers were never intended to take rain events like this. There's a lot of infiltration, whether it's in the private laterals or in the public sewers. We've done a lot of lining as well. So there are a lot of things and a lot of decisions that go into each of these items. It's not as simple as go out and do this one thing, and it'll resolve the problem. Sometimes there's multiple steps, and sometimes it takes many years. So I would say that, you know, anybody that would be interested in sitting down and talking will certainly get our sewer crews go out. They do a great job of explaining things that we have, especially one of the options that we implemented about four or five years ago, the utility health and safety program, which the city has budgeted $100,000 a year out of the sewer fund and the water fund to go into repairs that residents can't normally afford on their own. So those are things, if you do have a leaking lateral, we realize that that is a savings to the city, because if you can fix that lateral, and you're able to put in that backflow device into your line, the check valve into your line that doesn't allow the water to come backwards from the main, that those types of things will save and will help, but it'll also help that we won't have to spend the money at the wastewater treatment plant. So we felt that it was a good endeavor for the city and justified on the city's end, but also a very important measure that we could take to help residents supplement those funds, because sometimes those repairs cost a couple thousand dollars. Sometimes they're in the neighborhood of $10,000 or more. On average, we're seeing them coming in around $5,000 in the city usually. This is just on the sewer side, and the city will supplement that with, I believe we're around 80% now. That gets run through Deb Eversol, who runs our housing program, our housing grants as well. So it's all in one place that you can contact them. If you are having problems, our sewer department will come out, give you options. And I will let people know that it's nearly impossible for us to come up with exactly what went wrong and give recommendations after the fact. It helps so much more if we can see it in action and see exactly what's going on while a basement is flooding or while somebody's getting water somewhere.
Mr. Klein, I think you indicated this is probably worth mentioning again. We are so vulnerable because we, like many older cities, have combined sewer and storm sewer and sanitary sewer in one pipe. Ballpark idea of what it would take to fix that, even in a small city like Sandusky?
Yes, through, this is something that we've been in discussions with EPA in the past. And that range was somewhere in the hundreds of millions of dollars for complete sewer separation throughout the city. And that was to also get us down to somewhere between zero and four overflows per year. So you're talking, in today's numbers, with the recent inflation that we've had, you're talking probably somewhere in the $400 million range to do sewer separation in all of the combined sewer areas.
Imagine what that would do to our residents' rights.
Yes.
Comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington?
I was a little slow on old business, I think. If you go to the, I was commenting on Dave's comment, the city commission's website page, agendas, minutes, under minutes, the city manager's report will be in the minutes.
In the minutes, okay.
You don't have to get an email.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
With regard to water in the basements, it's the, all that you've talked about that you've done is actually very good, and it reflects what we're willing to spend the money on up to now. The concept of judging how well we're doing based on phone calls, the Foxborough area, which I live on East Old Gate, I have not had flooding since you put in the work we did down Cleveland Road until today, and it was this week, this time, and it was about three steps up my basement. And frankly, the cost of new furnace, new refrigerator, I should say, new appliances all downstairs, raising my rates a little bit to do more is probably not an issue for people, when you realize what it costs us. I appreciate you not wanting to raise rates, but $400 million to do the entire city's a lot, but we, and this is a commission issue, it's not a staff issue, it has nothing to do with staff. It's our willingness to commit resources to fix this problem before we do other things, whatever it may be. And so, but it starts with you telling us what you can do. Neighborhood at a time, it doesn't matter, we all realize you're gonna have to wait your turn, spend $400 million, but would appreciate a, again, it starts with this commission saying, "We would like you to put that on a higher priority of identifying what can be done for this neighborhood and that neighborhood, and we'll bite this off a little bit at a time, it's the best you can hope for." I will, and I will take you up on finding out why this keeps going back up in my house. I could say, "Just tell me, what do I have to spend to stop this?" Thank you.
The additional items of new business.
I do have one other item. I know I said that it doesn't, it's hard for us to determine exactly what the problem was after the fact, but I don't want to discourage people from calling and letting us know, because our sewer department is working with our IT department to get all of our phone calls on GIS, so we can do exactly that and focus our dollars where we get the most bang for the buck right off the start, which is what we've done in the past. We're gonna continue to do that, and that's something that's important to us, to make sure that we are documenting this and making sure that we know exactly where the problems are, so we're spending it wisely as well.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Public comments on any item that pertains to city business? If you step to the podium and give us your name and address, we'll put it in the record and we'll know how to get back to you.
Hi there. My name is Una Williamson, and I was told that I was allowed to come here and speak, and so thank you for...
Can you share this and address?
I'm sorry? Yeah, I'm sorry. 115 Lakeland Drive, Sandusky, Ohio. So, I'm one of the storm victims here, and my basement didn't flood because I don't have a basement, but my entire house was under sewage and contaminated water. So, I've lost everything, almost everything at this point, so.
Is Lakeland Drive Perkins Township? Lakeland Drive is not in the city of Sandusky?
No.
And we certainly had a lot of flooding in the city of Sandusky, but your issue should deal with items that pertain to the city of Sandusky.
Okay, so again, I was just told that I could come down here and speak, so thank you for...
I think with Lakeland, it's mainly Pike Creek.
I just didn't know...
Do you know where you would go to talk to the Perkins Township trustees?
No, I have no resources, and I'm displaced at this point, and so nobody is really there to help and offer assistance. So, I was just hoping to maybe get some guidance on that.
Yes, and the township hall is located close to Kroger's. There's electronic signs, so if they meet, I think, on Tuesdays twice a month.
I think our city manager, we've got your address, and our city manager will reach out to you and give you a good connection to them.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks for being here, though.
Yes. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Any additional public comments regarding any items of city business?
How you doing? I was here, my name's Nick Famular, I live down on the end of River Ave, 2340. Stood in front of you guys over a year ago.
Can we get your name and address?
Nick Famular, 2340 River Ave.
Okay, thanks.
And you guys approved of putting in a facility next to us without having any storm sewers on our end of, speaking of storm sewers and everything that needs to be done, we've been fighting, first we had to fight to keep your guys' water off the street, because it floods, because there's no storm sewer, which I get it, but you figured out that on your guys' property, there's a valve that you guys can pump out, and once you get to it, you can pump out the street. We, as residents, came down with our concerns on all this, and you guys approved it with the watershed of this property. The watershed of Pike Creek Wharf that is being put in is now 100% draining our way. The whole site, and your guys', your guy came out and brought me this map and showed me what it was supposed to be, and it is nothing like what it's supposed to be. So, all their watershed, 100%, I shouldn't say 100%, a little bit of it goes over towards the other neighbors, the rest of it comes towards me and myself and Katie, which I think she's on her way down here, that's the other neighbor. But that property caused her property to pool up a foot, because all the watershed, three-quarters of it, comes our way. There's no quail, like showing on this print, there's no drainage system at all on that property, and you got concrete, parking lot, and building on three-quarters of the property. So, where does that watershed go? It goes on your guys' street, and it comes over to our place. I've learned how to control the water. Obviously, we can't fix the lake. That's Mother Nature, she comes in, she comes in the back, I can't stop it. It fills up Katie's yard. I've done a lot, I've spent a lot of money, I've built quails. Because of your guys' pipe, I had to build up all the way down the front, almost to Pike Creek Marina years ago, which, thank God we did that, because you guys would have flooded me before, the building flooded me the other night. But I was over getting my water out, like I always do, and I couldn't figure out why the water kept coming through my building. Well, there's only one way that happens, when the lake comes up. So, I go around and I look, well, guess what? All the watershed is 100% coming this way off of his building into Katie's property, filling her property, which in turn puts that much water beside my building. Why is this person able to get away with not putting in stuff according to your guys' plans, is my question.
I think that is something that our city manager will take up with our building department as early as 8:00 tomorrow morning.
So, that's it?
We'll review that, we'll review those plans, and if it's not put in the way it's approved, we will be on that property.
So, what happens out of that? I mean, I'm asking because I don't know. Does it get fined, slapped on the hand, do they have to tear it out, fix it, can they not open it? I mean, what's the process?
My opinion is it has to be fixed. It will have to be fixed according to what we...
And I get the rainfall, I understand all that, but had this been done right, I probably wouldn't have flooded in my home. And I flooded in my home and hadn't had to fight it, and trust me, I get it, I've had to do it, but like I said, I learned you guys got me first, I spent all my money on you guys, then I had to spend all my money back here because of the lake, and now I'm getting it from this side. And how much more money do I gotta spend to keep water off my property? And again, you guys with your pump, that's great and fine and dandy, but if we wouldn't have built our wall up all the way down through there, I would have been a mess. And again, they got money for you guys to build this place, and I gotta spend my money to try to keep them out? That's what's not making a lot of sense.
Mr. Orzak, we'll contact the building department in the morning, and they'll tackle that problem.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Additional public comments on any items?
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
In this meeting, in the minutes, it was said that there would be a fence put from one end of that property to the other, was part of the deal to approve this. There's no fence. The place was supposed to open this weekend, but it doesn't look like that's gonna happen. It's been an ongoing project that's been a nuisance, shattered all over our neighborhood three times now through storms, which I get it, but brand-new building. So, where's the fence? Is that supposed to go up still? And they added 20 feet of property to their property by shoving the wall out. So, does that mean they're going all the way out to the head of their property, like they should, like they said they were going to? Or are they just going to where their property was originally at, 20 feet further in? Should be all the way out, because that blocks them from, you know, this is right in my neighbor's. I mean, literally, she's from here to her away from somebody on a porch eating dinner.
I can assure you that we will look at those plans and take whatever corrective action is required by us.
Thank you.
Tim Schwager, 362 Sheffield Way. Just a couple of comments on this past week's water issue. The number of $400 million was mentioned earlier tonight about a complete fix possibly. I want to note that the city's been under a EPA consent decree order since 1994, so we've had 30 years to fix this problem, instead of waiting till the last minute. What's not quite clear is how many folks received water in their basement that was combined raw sewage versus stormwater. There's not much of a difference, because the cleanup is the same, and you still get the odor and the mold, et cetera, et cetera. So, that would be interesting to find out how many basements actually got combined sewer water. The lady that spoke before me, she's left, but I guess the question that she probably should have asked is, are we actually treating Perkins water, Heron's water, other communities' water, and is there something that we can alleviate that to help alleviate our issue? Is there a way to send that water to the county if we already aren't? So, that would be something that maybe the engineer could answer. The other concern is, I know a lot of the people at this table don't really appreciate social media, but it is a good source of information for people to share in the community. And one of the issues that came up last week was a letter that was sent to residents off Sherman Street in the vicinity of the unimproved Johnson Street. The letter came from a city employee, whether or not she did it on her own, or whether she had approval from the supervisor or from the city manager, but she sent out a letter to folks in that vicinity stating ordinance, code of ordinances number 531, and I don't remember the sub-number, but that it is now the resident's responsibility for the resident to take care of unimproved streets. And it created a bit of a panic out there in that area, and I guess that the issue has now been resolved, that a letter went back out to those residents, that they are not responsible to take care of unimproved streets. But I would suggest that someone from this body, direct city law director, to look into that ordinance and see if it conflicts with any state Ohio revised code sections that require the city to take care of alleys, unimproved streets, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwager. Additional public comments on any items pertaining to city business?
Greetings, Commissioners. Tom Lamark at 20648th Street, also known as a water-related street these days. I would guess if I have to come back a third time over the water issues, that I'll change my tax rate to water-related property. And I'm kind of tired of it, but you know that. There's probably a couple thousand people that were affected this week by the rains and the storms, the two storms back-to-back. So, I'm not alone when it comes to the flooded basements for a change. I don't know that that's so good either. But then with that storm came a lot of trees and branches, and our city looked terrible, and still does, I mean, they're doing their best they can to pick up all the debris. But then the city put out a notice on social media that it would be the homeowner's responsibility to get rid of the branches from their own trees, from the sidewalk in, meaning they'll take care of the boulevard trees, but if you've got a tree on your property, your backyard, and a branch just came down, you're gonna have to find somebody to deal with that. There are a lot of people in this town that have yards and trees that cannot afford to pay someone to haul that away for them. They may be able to lug it out to the curb and cut it up a little bit, but I think the city should, at this time, make up a resolution to pay for those branches to be picked up from the homeowner's curb area for any of that stuff that came down, that they can get out of there in the next 10 days or so, and take it out of the water and sewer fund like we do everything else, because in my case, I mean, it was sewage that came into my house as part of that storm, so why not let the water and sewer fund pay for the tree debris removal from the homeowners? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamark. Additional public comments on any item pertaining to city business?
Hi, guys and gals. Vicki Byrd, 1110 West Market Street. I just have three points, three comments to make on. Number one, thank you city commissioners for helping make John Orzak our new city manager. I think it was your best choice. I'd rather have somebody that grew up in this city and knows this city than somebody from outside of it. I have a question in regards to the location of the rec center, as you call it. I'm guessing that the first pick is gonna be American Cran. Number one pick? Other sites, right?
That's it.
Okay. A big issue seems to be protection from trains, noise, derailments, like we've experienced, correct? Build a wall. You drive through any large city, there's a concrete wall. It may cost money, but at least it'll protect it, because I live on West Market Street, I can hear the trains on West Market Street. I spend time on Jackson Street, I can tell you what time a train runs through the city. Every time. I grew up on the West End, that's still cut off, still cut off at times. I go to work to go to East Harbor, I can't go because of a coal train, can't take West Monroe, gotta go around, can't go across Edgewater, because they're stopped and they're there for an hour. We'll deal with that at some point. It's the railroad, they can do whatever they want, right? They've proven that to us. Protect a city from Norfolk Southern, from that, from this. You have people complaining that are buying up buildings and going to refurbish them, and they don't like the noise from the trains. Don't buy a building by the railroad tracks. I grew up by the railroad tracks, you're gonna hear them on West Market Street. You can hear them all over this city. Yeah, protect a building from it. If that's the site for it, you've got enough place there. If it's gonna be there, we talk about the amenities, we talk about the memberships, it's gonna cost $700,000 a year to operate, we've gotta make up a difference. Is there any thought process to part of that being a cultural arts center, where you can bring money in from all the children that could come in, all the adults, whoever it may be, senior citizens, and participate? I lived in Anashtoa, Oregon, they had a cultural arts center there. They put on performances, they put on things, and you paid money to go and watch. That will help pay for that. First, I thought this was supposed to be for kids. And yeah, no insult, Mr. Poole, you can take jazzercise at Jim Dorsey's, but you can't learn ballet, you can't learn jazz, you can't learn tap, you can't learn hip-hop, you can't learn modern, you can't learn the things that you need to learn by being socially active with all different people, of all different cultures, of all the aspects of the arts out there, whether it be creative, by hand, whatever the case may be. I wanna go back to the trains. Protect that building from the trains, protect them from derailments, because that was messed up. And I have one question. Has Norfolk Southern paid the city back yet?
Mr. Klein, do you look like you may have an answer?
Yes, they have paid on two months of the months that we've submitted. We're still waiting for about four, but I believe, five? They said that the check is in the mail. We ask them about every week. We ask them about every week on those, and they keep telling us, yes, they're paying it, but yeah, we're still waiting.
The payment has been better than expected.
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, in regards to the Columbus Ave overpass, when are the railings going back up? Or did I miss it and they've been up? Because I see people, I saw, people aren't supposed to be walking on there, they're walking on there.
Mr. Klein, if you have an answer, that's okay, and if you don't, you can...
Through you, Mr. Brady, to Mr. Klein.
Yes, those handrails were received about three weeks ago, but they were the wrong material, and so they asked if I wanted them to just put in the material that they got, and I told them, no, I needed the right stuff.
Thank you.
We needed to make sure that it was the right stuff.
Thank you, because those were nice railings, and I remember when those were put in.
So, they had to send them back, and they told me it was gonna be another six to eight weeks to get them back in. So, once they're in, we'll have them install them.
All righty. We talked about the flooding that just took place. Again, I live at 1110 West Market Street, there's a small river that runs from all the yards south of me, in between my garage and my home. Thank God, there's not quite three feet of a crawl space, but there's a river that runs through that as well. I don't have a basement to flood, but it does run that way. Water runs down, and it's coming back towards the bay. If you're gonna live underwater, it's rising, just know that. So, maybe you might want to protect your homes against rising waters. It's doing it on the oceans, it's gonna do it on the lake. It's coming this way. The West End was horrible. It took everything, you went this way, that way, this way, that way, to get around. That's okay. Anybody here old enough to remember the flood of '69 and '68? I know you do, Mr. Brady, you do, Mr. Murray, you do, Mr. Poole, I know you do, Mike Meiser, John Orzak, I know you do. I lived on Cement Ave, 333 Cement Ave. I built a raft that day. I almost drowned that day. That West End floods. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the last, what, 10 years, 11 years now, of the progress that's been made. Things that have not been touched for 60, 70, 80 years are not going to get fixed overnight. It's gonna take some money. If it's gonna cost for $100 million, maybe somebody's wise enough, and we have somebody within the city department, I know we do, to help with grant money, federal grant money, to help do that and take care of that. The city may want to issue warnings to the people throughout the city who are allowing their children to swim in sewage water, because they think it's fun, because that's what was going on. It's gonna flood. You own a home, get a septic pump, put it in the basement. That's what my father did. I remember this much space between the water and the roof of our basement as a child. I remember, I rode our street, Cement Ave was washed away. There is no end to Cement Ave. Used to be, there isn't anymore. And that's what happens. You're not gonna beat Mother Nature. Mother Nature's gonna beat us, unless we build up to fight it. And I don't blame you, 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 or you, none of yous. What I blame is the stuff that wasn't done over the last 40, 50, 60, 70 years.
Mr. Byrd, I want to thank you for your comments, and I rarely cut people off on a time limit. I'm just glad you got to the portion of praising our commission, though I wish you would have led with that.
Led with praising? No, I'm just saying, you know, things that have been ignored for 60, 70, 80 years aren't gonna be fixed in time.
Thank you. Thank you, and it's good to see you again. You were with us a lot years ago.
Hey, in '69, you were on a raft, don't forget. He's just talking about playing in the water. I couldn't wait to get out in the water, I'm 69.
Additional public comments? If not, it will entertain a motion to adjourn.